Oh yeah. I feel like I have one for her.
Parent test. She's like, Karen can do it, but it's not me. It's finger and tooth popped out. But I'm retired. I don't understand, they were roommates here. I didn't think they had their students there.
I'm on the wrong side.
I'm like, I'm asking here.
Anyone else have a sign to speak?
That's what I thought.
You're on there. You're on there?
Yes.
Anyone else? Speak, okay. Need a copy of the agreement if you're all needing a copy.
Hello, can you hear me?
No.
Okay, we're just getting ready to start. We've got a room full, so behave yourself. Three minutes.
It's usually me, Katie, and Erin. The three.
She stirred up.
Is that what you come back for?
Me? Yeah, some people say I come back just to be a pain in the ass.
It's all right, I never left and I'm still a pain in the ass.
Yeah, I'll tell you, I've been like that since Sunday school. I'm way overpriced. Problem child I was. Fix old, maybe? Yeah, there it is. My brother does?
Brother.
Oh.
For your life, he started.
It is. There's currently nine people watching us.
Okay, we'll call if you need some orders, please. Need to prove the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. A second.
A second, approve the agenda on the favor? Okay.
Thank you, Robert. I'm gonna forego the citizens opportunity dressing council at this point. This will lead right down to the, after we have a little presentation here of our agreement.
So, just in, so the quick summary is, is that over the last three months, we've been working on options for the city of Lorenz, and obviously, the sheriff's office is one option, and the city of Pocahontas is the second option. After meeting with them, and then we've had, did have a meeting with the mayor and Cody and a couple of theirs folks, we, we worked out the finer details over the last several months of kind of going back and forth and discussing and working with an attorney, we used Lorenz's city attorney to construct the document, which is a standard 2080 for law enforcement sharing. Basically, what it summarizes and says is that I will be the administrator of both police departments. Both police departments will exist independently of each other. They don't, there's no, you know, assistant chief in Lorenz here, I'm the boss, there's no, because we don't have an assistant chief here either. So, I will manage both departments, they will provide two officers, we will provide four, including myself. In that, then, we will provide them 21 hours of support each week. And to be reimbursed by 50% of what it costs to have me as your chief of police, the base salary. So, which was 75, nine, and then whatever it's going up to now, eighty something. So, in that, then, they will give the city of Pocahontas that, plus benefits and whatever it costs to have me here. And on top of that, it also means that both departments, while independent, can cover each other. That the 2080 basically says Lorenz can come down here, if we're short or if they're short up there, we can go, if we go beyond the 21 hours, then we can provide them with additional coverage. I know Tom, one of the first questions that came out talked about the vehicles and stuff, we did work out a, a formula for the mileage. So, that'd be $28 round trip and 70 cents a mile is what we figured out. For the most part, to remember is, so if, if one of our reserves goes up and they have their two full shifts. Now, I currently am sitting on the four possible applications for law enforcement officers right now. I'm very lucky that I've had the people come forward at this time. If we can fill those two slots up there, that's our, really our open shifts. I have one open shift here with the resignation of Tyler Stokes, you know, on Tuesday when he left. So, we technically have three openings at this time. So, what can happen here is, is that if a reserve from here wants to come and fill one of those two shifts over in Lorenz, the city of Lorenz reimburses the city of Pocahontas, and we're basically the, the hub for payment. So, if it's, a reserve is getting $16 an hour, we send a bill to Lorenz, and it's paid, everything's paid quarterly, they pay that officer's salary to go work, they're working in a Lorenz vehicle with Lorenz equipment and that. Same goes if they were to come here and do that for us, they would come down here and they would drive a Pocahontas vehicle, but, so they'll be using our equipment. Doesn't mean, again, that the department's a conjoin, it's just that I'm the boss at the end of the day, right? So, that's how those types of things work, and it's about filling those times. But at minimum, we will always provide them 21 hours for that reimbursement for half of me. And like I said, and that, and a lot of that, again, even includes, obviously, the chief duties, which comes in more than even just patrol. A lot of it's just all the stuff that I have to do secretly.
So, do they have any, anybody, are they having officers right now?
At this point, we got one potentially hired, we have to wait for an academy meeting for him. And then, like I said, I, and that's one of my four, and then I have three others that I have potentially could push.
My concern is the time being from now, we're down one, and they only have, if they don't have any right now, if we're extending our guys to cover all those shifts, I don't want to put us short.
It doesn't put us short because we're already full, and the guys don't cover, I mean, they pick up some extra shifts, but for the most part, I'm the one that eats all the extra shifts. So, I'm the one, I'm the 48ers. So, the way that works in your 12-hour system is, there are, there's two sides, there's an A, B, C, and D. I'm on the A side, Mason is on the C side, and Stokes was on, was D. Well, then I had Josh Coon over here, right? Well, now Josh moves over, and now I am back to being the A guy, so I work a block of 48ers. So, it doesn't put us that, I mean, it's not that much extra burden, it rightfully works out to three hours a day.
Even as it sits right now, them not having officers?
Correct.
So, if they have officers, and is it on them to, or is it, it's on you then to hire people for them? And to go through that whole process?
And that comes out of that 21 hours as well, so that's all part of that time. But those are just considered open available shifts up in Lorenz? It's not that I'm trying, I mean, I have to actively say, okay, Mason, you just finished now, but now I need you to go work overtime. That's, if you want to work the shift, you can work it up there, it just means Lorenz always has a minimum of 21 hours of coverage, is what we're guaranteed. You know, if somebody wants to go to make the extra money, they can go up and get in the squad car. So, that's up to the officers.
So, who's next? To me, it almost sounded like you said there's not a requirement for, like, they'll be asked to volunteer, then, if they want to, they go? But what if nobody volunteers?
Then we just have our 21 hours a week, so we just base it on the calls.
So, but then those 21 hours, we're gonna have somebody patrolling over that for 21 hours?
Correct. Or my administrative time, and I want to be careful of that, because, I mean, in administrative time, you know, that would be some time.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, I have to completely, we, we have to completely reef, we flush the, the department and get all the books back in line. So, I have a little bit of work to do there, too. I can do it, Mason, I don't. And it works in opposite, so like, right now, I have a shift that I cannot cover, right? I've got a shift coming up at the, in the first week of May, or the first weekend in May, that I can't cover right now, that I've got nobody to work it for sure. If there were Lorenz officers there, which again, I'm, hopefully, that I can fill here relatively quickly, like, I hope that I can fill my spot here, right? That they would then provide top cover during that time when there's nobody around. So, they can reverse it on us and we can, but it just provides us, now we have six officers, basically, instead of four.
If we have all spots filled?
Right.
And I just want to make sure our guys aren't wanting to be too, if we do this, you know, actual workload or habit to do something differently.
I don't believe so, we did have a PD meeting, and it seemed like, I know, like, Mason's biggest concern was, well, if this doesn't work out, what can we do? Well, we just, you know, we have to figure out something, Lorenz has to figure out something.
Because that was my thing, it's a year agreement, you know, I haven't seen this for too long, but I always wondered if there was almost like a trial phase, if you do a shorter timeframe than a year. I don't want to put us in a bad spot.
You can get out after 90 days. There's a 90-day, there's a 90-day clause in that 2080. So, yes, the contract is for a year, but it allows for a 90, so we just see how it works. That's kind of the thought part, and that's kind of how our discussion went there, too, is that, you know, we don't know if this is gonna work or not, but try and see, and, and, you know, it can benefit a lot, there can be a lot more benefits than, than problems, and that's my opinion.
So, we hired you full-time here.
Correct.
How are you gonna do your full-time here and plus do Lorenz?
It's, it's administrative work for Lorenz, so I, I don't see that as being, you know, and if anybody knows how many phone calls I take in a week, there isn't time, I mean, you know, I just do it when I do it, and I'm not adding, you're paying more of that 40 hours for me to work here, you know? I mean, as far as the administrative stuff, again, I can be blunt, but I don't, I'm very confident, as you can tell, of that stuff. Most of it's just trying to get their books in line, trying to get their police department back if I'm running it. And honestly, Lorenz's goal, and the last meeting I was up in Lorenz was, they hope that they can get their police department back healthy when we start, when we start to see more people wanting to get into law enforcement and stuff, you know, this agreement may not be even needed at some point, you know, that's their goal, so Lorenz made that very.
So, how many hours would you probably have to spend over there getting that lined up?
No more than 21 a week.
And would you necessarily have to be there, or you could be here doing it?
Does that 21 include the officer that's two, right? If they sold it, right? Does that leave Pocahontas anytime uncovered?
No more uncovered than, than it occurs anytime during any other thing, you know? My example is, is when we had Nathan Nicholas out there running around, where do you think all the law enforcement officers were? There was nobody in Pocahontas for eight hours, right? Now, if we had gotten a call in that eight hours, we would've had to figure that out. I mean, that's the reality of working small counties, and I know the sheriff's standing over there, you know? We have an amazing system in Pocahontas County, and it works well, you know? We all take care of each other, so that's the reality of it. Is there a chance that I could be over there and a call comes up? Well, I was on, uh, doing a truancy, and I had to go, because the school district, I went over to Marathon, but I had to meet him at nine o'clock in the morning. There was a call back here, well, I have to come back, but I have to go take that truancy, too, that's still part of my duties, and it's still part of what we signed up for, right? You know, how many times have I gone over to Raw for Fonda, or, you know, I was just in Fonda on Sunday, or? Mutual aid, or anything like that, and the key is, is that we have reserves, we have at least one more reserve willing to come on, she just wants to be reserved only, you know, those are those folks that I can call on the phone and say, hey, I need you to go this. You know, Zach Vader is one of my, you know, you know, he's one of the ones that, he's, he's always listening and stuff, he's like, hey, do you need me to come? Yeah, can you do that for me? The reality of how often it happens, though, when Lorenz and Pocahontas are, have a call at the same time, yes, it can happen, is extremely rare. It doesn't happen very often. And like I said, I mean, even this weekend, on Sunday, uh, the chief deputy gets called up because a very, very bad guy tried to kill an officer back in the day from Lorenz years ago, ran from a deputy sheriff, and so he went up there. Well, who's, who's the officer in the county then? And I'm not, I don't want to think anybody that I'm bitching about that, that's what we do for each other, right? And, and it goes that way, and I'm not asking anybody to cover our time without pay or, but again, when we help each other out, it just builds a stronger community, right, you know?
And you're not going for it every call?
Right.
You're, you're, you are, that's what their officers are for.
Right, exactly. You know, it's just right now, I know it just, it's a little tougher, because then they don't have their two officer spots filled. Once they have their two officer spots filled, you know, which I'll have a better idea here in a couple of weeks, then we've got more people to rely on, so.
Okay, thank you. Kai?
I have a few questions about, you know, what is the benefit of Pocahontas residents with the sharing deal? My concern is a little bit that, you know, you're saying it's 21 hours, you're gonna go up there and do administrative, and you're also gonna provide somebody to patrol up there, that's only three hours a day. You got 24 hours a day to cover, I think, uh, three hours a day is gonna be a long way short of having enough staff to cover. Pocahontas can't do that, that you being, uh, administrated for three hours a day, I can see you can eat that time up in a hurry. So, then how do you provide extra time for them to go up there, and they're short, they have a guy gone or whatever? I mean, I look at two officers up there, if they work an eight-hour shift, that's only covering 16 hours a day, what are you gonna do with the other eight?
Well, they're, they're working 12s.
Uh, even a 12-hour day. But they can't do that every day unless you're gonna pay them, you know, every day of the week overtime, and I can't see that amount of money, because, you know, once they work, uh, three 12-hour shifts, it pretty well eats up the time for the week.
So, I think you're misunderstanding, you know, that's what I just realized, is that, okay, so, the two officer shifts in Lorenz are optional for us, for our officers to fill, we don't have to fill those.
Right, but if you have a, an off, two officers up there, and they're each working a 12-hour shift, which is three days worth, that's 36 hours, and they're, if they're gonna work another four in there to get their 40 hours a week, that still leaves about three days where who's covering all that time?
Well, it's not, you'd be surprised in that 20, how, again, there are only 3,600 calls for the city of Pocahontas, which I say only, so that's three, answer three to five calls a day, and the rest of it, and that is also based on traffic and security and stuff. You know, that's just us having our presence, right? So, up there, there's not that, I mean, I don't know, they answered 600 calls in the one full year that they have. Well, 600?
Lorenz.
Did, yeah, over, over 365 days, and that's a lot of, hey, I'm out of cases doing security, hey, I'm out, it's not domestics and those kind of things. So, honestly, when you lay it out, and that's the reason why we're gonna tune those shifts, because I was able to use our computer A dispatch to determine between 1:00 PM and 1:00 AM, when are most of their calls?
Okay, so then, then if you have, you know, you're hiring these people, are they all academy certified?
Yes.
Every one that you'll hire, because my understanding is, if they're not academy, they can't do everything that somebody's gone through the academy, they can't write as many tickets, if you have an OWI, they can't go give them a ticket. So, then if you have to bring in another officer for some of that stuff that are not academy certified, how are you gonna start covering that, who does that?
So, the only thing an officer can't do, is like a reserve officer, those, the only thing they can't do is, let me be honest, that's it. They can do any other crime, they can do other, now, reserve officers are not supposed to do investigations unless they're under the dutiful eye of, like, a guess who? And I get phone calls, 3:00 in the morning, 1:00 in the afternoon, even when I'm off, no matter where I'm at, if I'm with Army or whatever. So, that's never been a problem, we already have that here, I mean, that's every day here, so it doesn't affect, that has no, that will have no effect.
So, what would happen if you get called out on, being on a reserve for the Army, and you're gone for six months, or a year? Who's taking over this position of police chief?
Well, that's something we have to do when we come to it, that's just part of my service.
Well, I know, but we should have a plan ahead of time, so that, you know, if you could get called tomorrow, and all of a sudden they say, you're gone for six months, what's the plan?
The unit I'm attached to, that's not probable.
Well, I know, not probable, but in this world, anything's possible.
But there's no way to absolutely prepare for that, because I, remember, I deployed twice under the city of Fonda, and we made it work. There was no problem.
You know, I'm just kind of sometimes worried about Pocahontas itself having 24-hour coverage, you know, with trying to share and trying to cover that up there. I know that just in Pocahontas County, it's given us a little stretch, you know, you were saying about the sharing of all the, of different officers, whether it's sheriff's department, police department. We've probably lost four to six officers in the county with Fonda not having a police force anymore, Raw not having a police force anymore, right now Lorenz doesn't have any officers. So, the backup isn't quite there like it used to be. Which is concerning, you know, like, uh, being our school president still, where that can take time. You guys, if you do have some cases where you have to do it, and you're in court time, you know, if you arrest somebody or do something, and you don't show up in court to be there, they throw the case out because nobody showed up. So, that is gonna take some of your time. I just kind of wondered, with this kind of agreement?
Let's move along.
I'm just trying to go through my questions, and you can answer them later if you want. I mean, you know, I, I had another point, like, with the car insurance, okay? If you're driving from here to Lorenz, and for some reason you had a wreck or something, and you're driving Pocahontas' car out there, does our insurance here in Pocahontas cover it, or vice versa? If Lorenz is providing a car to come down here to help, or just to drive down here and they're in a wreck, are we covered? I don't want some kind of lawsuit that, uh, you know, something that's not covered or anything.
Remember, we already provide mutual aid, so we already do that.
Okay, what if it's not a mutual aid, if it's just, uh, you know, you're driving from point A to point B, and, and it's not something, a mutual aid of, of offense?
So, this contract design defines all of that as mutual aid, okay? We gotta move along.
Thanks. Tiffany?
I also have a list of questions, so I'll try to be quick, but there's not many people on that list, so I think that we should have a little bit of extra time to speak and be heard. I just want to clarify, you stated that your staff at Lorenz is certified?
It will be, yes, they have to go to the academy.
Now, are they certified?
There is no staff in Lorenz.
The people, the four people that you have on your list?
No, they will have to go to the academy.
Okay, and then how long does that take?
Eight weeks, for a couple of them can go to the short course for only eight weeks, and then one of them would have to do a 16, and I think the other would have to do a 16, so, comparable.
Months, again? Okay. Is, you said that your POE staff will be working 21 hours a week?
The Pocahontas Police Department, my, my time included, admin and everything, will provide 21 hours.
Okay. Has anyone even at the table, or yourself, spoke with anyone at the Sheriff's Department about their opinion on you doing this?
I've talked to Steve a little bit, I don't think we talked, I mean, he's given me an opinion, to be honest.
Anybody else?
I have.
Is your POE PD right now patrolling Lorenz without a contract?
No, we have not been patrolled, I went up there today to go grab the contract. We have not patrolled up there, other than Tyler went up there to do some training stuff, but I asked him to do it.
Huh, okay. Do you believe that Lorenz needs more than just three hours a day?
Well, I mean, I think every agency needs more than three hours a day.
With the shitshow and stuff that goes on up there?
If you look at actually the call base, and you pull it from the CAT system, which you're very familiar with? Yeah, no, if you look at the number of calls up there in Lorenz, you're only averaging like five calls a week?
But what kind of calls are there?
Five calls a week, there hasn't been, I, we didn't look at just in this week, Tiffany, and I can go through it. You had one arrest, and you had one, somebody wanted information, and that's it, that's all you had.
I have that, I'm, I'm not aware of this week, I apologize. You said that you were going to take cover if nobody else could, so you're covering here, and you're covering there, how safe is that?
Very safe, it's the same thing, how is it not? I'm on, I'm up, I'm up on 48 hours now, I'm just coming off the end of a 48.
And how is that safe?
It is safe. I mean, so how, I mean, I guess I don't understand how it's not safe.
We, we are only allowed to work a certain number of hours in a day because of safety.
But you know, well, no, that's not true, number one, that's, it's actually ocean regulation, it's not safety. It's about overtime, it's about labor laws and stuff. The reason why I can do it is because I do get the time off, right? I don't physically work 48 hours, the council and everybody is very aware that I cover the time that I can cover. And you know that, because you know you call me in home.
If this is your plan to start taking over the little towns in our county, why don't you just join the sheriff's office? Because that's what we do.
Well, I'm gonna answer that, I'll let you share. That's not, I've never said that, this is a good deal between Pocahontas and Lorenz. I'm not worried about any other towns in the county, I mean, if they approach us, we can always look at it, but at this point, they already have contracts, so I don't see why they would.
You, you're not worried about any other towns in the county?
If they reach out to me, we'll talk about it, but I'm not worried about covering their law enforcement issue.
Okay, thank you.
Tony?
Mayor and council? I, I wanted to speak so I could ask you to consider this question in the big picture and not answer this one in an isolated silo just based on what it is by itself. I also want the citizens of the community to consider some of these same things. We already share a lot of things with Lorenz, we do it for a reason, right? The reason we share the school, the reason we share their services, small towns, women populations. As ag gets more automated, there's less people here, and the forecast trends that we're planning for at the school tell you there's gonna be less here in five years. So, you have to continue to point out on, how can we offer as good or better with less? And how do we go about creating those types of things, and we need to, that's why we share in the first place, okay? And that we're stronger and better together when the numbers are dropping with both of us. We're asking the school to expand different sharing things, and, and speaking with their city council, when I went to speak to them, the same as I had with you guys as the public relations committee, we talked about increasing that. One of the things that we wanted to ask both councils to do was share summer rec. Could you guys offer the same baseball and soccer programs with Lorenz? Can you help us share more things together so that those kids coming out of elementary school already feel partnered with those kids, and they come here and execute on the sharing program that we, we already have? Those types of things where we work together more are the places that we can help each other out, like this, the potential of what this police chief agreement offers. And the challenge for, for you guys, as, as well as for us as citizens, is what's our mindset when we look at things like this? You, we will face adversity, if you launch this program, will it be perfect? No, you will have problems, okay? You don't do anything, you're also gonna have problems. So, I'd encourage you to create transparency. So I'd encourage you to create transparency and, on the issues and those valid concerns, to publish your answers to these list of questions about staffing hours, percent of time, contingency with the National Guard, safety and hours planning, the sheriff input and the ability to support that. I actually heard when I was at the Lorenz City Council that they had approached the Sheriff's Office first. And the Sheriff's Office had declined for different reasons. But as you guys dig into this deeper, the citizens and all, you'll, you'll see where all parties were involved in looking at this. Everyone who spoke tonight brought up some very real concerns. But I would challenge you guys to address those concerns. I would note that you did leave room for good faith negotiations at the 90-day point if you find you have problems. Thank you.
Any other?
So if I'm gonna be limiting on time, I don't want to go back and forth, I'll just state my questions and statements, get them all out there, and you can respond appropriately afterwards. So highlighting kind of what Kyle brought up, I'm not sure I heard any specific benefit to Poli residents in all any of that. The way that this agreement reads is that, in the basic terms, Lorenz is getting police chief services for, what is it, thirty-some thousand dollars, basically? But it is going to put a strain on our own police department, and open us up to potential liability. It doesn't appear that there's been any sort of kind of cost analysis versus risk benefit ratio performed or highlighted here. I'm curious to find out when the county was removed from the conversation, because it was brought up that initially the county was part of the conversation, and so curious to hear kind of when that portion of the discussion was removed. Also curious about the precedent this is going to set, because as we just kinda highlighted, although Rolf and Halflock may have their own contracts and agreements right now, if they find out that they could utilize us as their police department, and get a police chief for, police chief services for a severely discounted rate, then we have a police chief who's now responsible for four surrounding towns, and what is the difference between having a county sheriff and a police chief that's in charge of all surrounding communities? What kind of liability does this expose Pocahontas to? In here, it says that, no matter if the police chief is acting for the City of Lorenz or for the City of Pocahontas, the City of Pocahontas is liable for anything that should come of it. And I think that that is slightly concerning, because if something were to happen over there, our residents are gonna end up paying the price for that. It's been brought up that, you know, the 21 hours is potentially for not only chief services, but also our own officer duty. And in here, for specific statements, according to the agreement, the 21 hours is only highlighted under the police chief services, where the police chief is not expected to allocate more than 21 hours in contracted performance of duties as Lorenz's police chief. Which means that he's not contracted for 21 hours, it can be less than 21 hours. But it is no more than 21 hours to be expected. It does not say anything about our officers, or us policing over there for 21 hours. It merely is related to his own police chief duties for 21 hours a week. I'm cautious about the, the staffing risks. We just had a full-time, we reduced down to part-time, we do have a person coming in from the academy. I'm curious as to the other full-time staff members, and what their kind of response is to this, and, and having this become potentially a thing. If we were to lose more of our full-time staff, and kinda like it was brought up, we can't even staff our own PD, how are we going to staff other communities' PD? I think that we do need to have a little bit of a selfish mindset in taking care of ourselves before we extend ourselves to other communities as much as we should. Again, continue to support our surrounding communities for the greater benefit. How is this going to come into play if there's a large disaster that extends across both communities? How are we going to have, you know, our police chief be in response here, while also being in response there concurrently? Those are kind of the highlights of how this specifically is worded. Liability for sure is a huge issue, I think. And I think a lot of this is kind of getting glossed over as how it is being presented and summarized, as opposed to us reading the contract word for word as to what it actually states. And I'm hoping that you guys all have read that, so that you can look at those specific details.
Can I make one statement, even though I've already used my time? I think as of right now, well, maybe take it back a month or so, the Sheriff's Office and the PD have always worked great together. And I appreciate that as a member of this community, and as a member of the Sheriff's Department. I know that if I need someone, I can call if one of the Sheriff's Department gentlemen need backup, and vice versa. I know that in three of our surrounding counties, the PD and the Sheriff's Office do not work together at all. And I do not want to work or live in a community like that.
Any other comments? Hearing none. At this point, anyway. Your wish is here.
So, with that last comment, would this strain the relationship between the PD and the Sheriff's Office?
I would think it actually helped, because, I mean, again, the Sheriff's Office is already stressed enough with their own, trying to go back with the Fonda law. This helps a little bit, but, I mean, Lorenz does have more calls.
Oh, I thought they only had a couple.
Well, I said they had more calls.
Oh.
As of now, is, is Lorenz, is the Sheriff's Department covering Lorenz?
They'll bid on May 1st.
And that?
Believe it or not. He's standing back here. They just wanted to know if you'd be willing to extend the contract in Lorenz past May 1st.
I had that discussion with the certificated writers, we're giving six months to fork this out, and now they're down to the last week, and still nothing.
So what happens if it doesn't?
I don't know, it's up to Lorenz on what they do. If I can make a couple of comments, I know I'm not on the list. Tony, you said that Lorenz says we don't want?
Isn't it, you guys talked?
We have negotiated with Lorenz for years to go ahead and provide their law enforcement. Well, that's, that's a lot of misinformation. Just six months ago, we shot them, shot them a deal, or shot them a price, I guess, to go ahead and provide their law enforcement. So that's a, that's a misinformation, that you got misunderstood into something. But what's gonna go on now if you don't go with this proposal?
I don't know, that's a good question.
But I don't feel like that's also a reason to approve it, just because we don't know, I mean. It's Lorenz's issue.
So is our price less than?
Yeah, it's Lorenz's problem, not Poli's.
Well, your price was, is that what, what the deal was?
So did they come to us, or how did this all materialize?
What's that?
The, the Lorenz-Pocahontas PD joining forces, where this material?
Who initiated the conversation, essentially?
Who initialized it materially?
Well, the Lorenz mayor contacted me.
Who contacted Plutter?
Running by Plutter.
You wanna call the Plutter mayor right now? You said you hadn't contacted anybody else.
I didn't contact the Plutter, I've not talked to Jake.
Well, you're calling Jake.
Bullshit.
I did not call Jake.
Bullshit.
Let's not get into that.
I think it's an ego trip.
It is an ego trip. I think there was Casey C. I remember calling her a couple of years ago, so. And they asked if there's gonna be a rift between the Sheriff's Office and the PD, I think that just spoke it.
So what benefits does it have? I think that's a big question everybody has, anyhow.
So the benefits that it has is the fact that we are, we, we also continue to struggle, and if you have more people to choose from, if you have more slots to choose from, it gives you more opportunity. This also increases the salary raise, it gives basically a $15,000 raise, because the City of Pocahontas has been extensively always behind the curve on those numbers for salaries. So with this, each officer will get a $10,000 raise into their salary to help provide this.
Where is that in this agreement?
Well, that's what the city council will go once this agreement is approved.
So that's not guaranteed, you guys would have to approve that and vote on it?
Well, they would have to, but it was already actually in the last meeting, if you'd have seen it on the thing, it showed 28E on the.
It's 7% cost of living adjustment.
Right, and then it had 28E with the $10,000. That's what the anticipated claim, but this has to be approved first before we can. So each officer would gain a $10,000, which would then put them near what the Sheriff's Office pays.
Why doesn't Lorenz just go get their own police?
Why, we would.
Because they can't, they can't find anybody to hire, because there's nobody to hire. Why is, why is Humble E.
If there's nobody to hire, then you have a bunch of guys.
I do, I do. But that's a police chief, is it completely, Marion PD, they have no applications.
How many applications do you have for Pocahontas right now?
Four. That's what I said.
I thought that was for Lorenz.
No. In my eyes, the citizens already have their chance to talk, I don't think we should go back and forth now. All I think is, is we need to do what's best for Pocahontas. And I mean this, I don't think we need to worry about what's best for Pocahontas. We need to do what's best for Pocahontas.
Thank you, Dean.
So. So, that's what I think our mindset should be.
I don't think that we can approve or deny this without, like, with firm confirmation on where the insurance stands. And to make sure that we're covered on our end, I know that we think, but until we have something that for sure says a document that says, from my understanding is that we sent off this to the underwriters, and, but there's not been a confirmation back that says, yes, you're covered on this scenario, that scenario. And then else, Tiffany's here, and probably could confirm that, that we don't have a, a 100% confirmation that we're covered. That would be my hesitation at this point on even making a motion for anything, is because I can't make a motion if I don't know we are 100% not exposing ourselves.
The agreement has been sent to EMC Insurance, it has been sent to Jester Insurance also, who reviews contracts for both of them to approve. I have not received the approval back from them as of end of day to day. I have also not received any additional concerns, questions, exposures, and what the costs associated with that may be. I've asked to be included in a lot of meetings, so that we could get that stuff upfront. And I have not always been included in that. So that is the delay, that I did not have that here today.
And that would be my main hesitation on, if, even if somebody were here to, were to make a motion to perform this, I would not be able to without knowing that portion of the documents. Not saying that I'm not opposed to it altogether, I do think that everything we shared with Lorenz, a lot of stuff that was highlighted, is something we should look at, not necessarily saying that we should do it, but, I mean, I agree with Tony, it's highlighted good. And I, I feel like we have quite a few questions that we haven't answered yet, and we need to.
The insurance, the insurance company would love to have all the questions, they have questions also, and have a meeting to get all the questions answered, so that it's very clear with both cities.
I do like the 90-day thing, in case, like, if it's a trial period to see how it goes. But I can't even start the trial period without knowing 100% yes or no on the insurance liability end of it, because I can't good faith go forward with something like that, so. I, I mean, I'm questioning the cost of what, it's actually costing Lorenz to do this.
So it's half of my salary in benefits, and just a dollar. So we just set the 40,000, because that's roughly, because that's just the base salary, and actually, if you read the 28E, it includes some other numbers too, that we would have to put together.
Plus, if we can cover any of their shifts over there, we get, like, if we, if we cover over the 21 hours, we get paid.
We get.
We get compensated for that.
It gets compensated for that officer's time. If we actually, I would be the highest hourly rate, obviously, for all of them, you know, if it was a reserve officer, whatever. And that's 21 hours with not covering a regular shift.
So, so if our employee works 40 hours here, and then they, they want some extra money, and they're gonna shift over there, and they go work that shift, are they getting overtime hours paid over there?
Regular rate.
They're getting regular rate over there, and that's the City of Pocahontas giving back, but then we're paying our employee an overtime rate?
No, no, because we don't pay an overtime rate, we don't even pay an overtime rate to take an overtime.
Because it's completely separate, that's a separate job, so it's not, right, not tied together.
And we already don't get an overtime rate, so if I, if my extra shifts, I mean, I get that I'm salary, but if Mason picked up an extra shift tomorrow, it's regular rate.
Okay.
We changed that here a long time ago, because of some other benefits that you guys gave. It's all regular.
But it's all separate, but they, they cover anything, if one of our guys wanted to go over and take a shift, they could. And that gets paid to the City of Pocahontas.
It comes to Pocahontas, and then we filter it, filter it up. We wanted to have one pay E system for simplicity, and that was.
So what do you make now?
Seventy-five.
What would, what would you be making now?
So with the 7% bump takes me to 80, and then, and that's our base salary, remember, we always have to do a base.
You're taking on another count, but you're not really.
So then I'm going up to 90.
And then aren't other employees, the regular?
Mason will be up at 75,000. And I think everybody will be almost in the 70s at that point. Lowest end of the Sheriff's Office, I thought, was at 78,000 right now.
I'm not gonna.
Don't worry about that number.
But then the way I read this, and we're not ready to act on this at this time.
I think there's more questions that need to be answered, I mean, I don't wanna rush the decision just because there are deadlines. I mean, I, there's no ill or important arrangements, but it's just. We don't have to. First, we've been pushing for the deadline already, and it's, and we have to.
Depends how long it needs to be, what she's, right, so.
Absolutely.
And they might come back next week, but there's more questions, and that's my main concern, is why do we, and, and having a defended black and white, clear cut. You're good, you're not good, these are the different situations that could arise, if, if.
Get our questions in order. Anything else, you could do, the call basis. So, the table?
I'm making a motion to table it, tell the next city council meeting. And I'll make a motion to put it on the next city council meeting, and if we need to table again, there's, if you want to regularly motion that, we can.
Second table?
How many times will we table and table and table until they decide?
Until we get the answers answered.
Okay, I, I didn't know.
I said that I, we don't have the answers from the insurance, so if I feel comfortable making a motion to yes or no on the next one, then I'll make a motion to yes or no on the next one.
But is there like, a, a limit, or a, like, you can just continue to table for any topic, not just this one? It's just a question that I got.
Yeah, we, we, you can table as long as you want.
Okay.
Rover, are you okay?
Yeah, I'm just kinda concerned about the insurance part of it, like, they're on duty, who's calling to duty, and that guy's, I want, I want to cut, right?
Pretty much the same, seriously.
Sounds like we might table it until the May 5th meeting, are you okay with that? You already did. Okay.
All in favor? Today, today.
Hi. All right.
I'll should do a adjournment. Nothing further on the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Thank you. All right, Rover.